Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for a short prayer and a salute to our flag? Almighty God, grant us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of our residents. May the heavenly Father of all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation, and may He watch over and protect our servicemen and women now guarding the gates of freedom. Salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terry, statement of publication?
Mayor, take notice that this council meeting of the Mayor and Borough Council being held on this ninth day of February 2015 has been advertised and posted in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Here.
Kilpatrick.
Here.
McGill.
Here.
Melendez.
Here.
Novak.
Rittenhouse.
Here.
Let the records reflect that our CFO has had a long scheduled vacation week, and our thoughts, our prayers, our condolences go out to the family of our business administrator, Dan Frankel, whose mother passed away over the weekend. He is taking time for -- to mourn her passing, and we wish her well, wish him well, and his family. Council President, approval of prior minutes?
May I move the following minutes of the mayor and the council be approved on roll call vote, subject to correction if necessary. December 15, 2014, executive session; January 1, 2015, reorganization meeting; and January 12, 2015, the combined meeting.
Second.
Okay. With that, we have a --
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
With that, we have a wonderful celebration tonight. Would the members of the Morgan First Aid Squad please come in front of the railing, and I'll ask my colleagues to stand by the railing? So, listen, I know what you guys look like. If you'd look at the TV camera while I read this, I'd appreciate it. We'd like the rest of the borough to see you and acknowledge what you do. That includes you, senior member Scanlon. This is a certificate of recognition presented by the Mayor and Borough Council to the Morgan First Aid Squad. The 2014 Best of the Best recipient, the Home News Tribune, Middlesex County, Reader's Choice Award, 45 years of service to the borough of Sayerville. With our humble thanks and congratulations.
Thank you.
Forty-five years, didn't I say? Oh, this -- Joe, you've aged. Okay. So now, we're gonna recognize an individual, and it's also a certificate of appreciation. Times being what they are, we can't send you a check, Joe. Presented by the Mayor and Borough Council to Joseph Scanlon of the Morgan First Aid Squad. For 45 years of outstanding service and volunteer work, your efforts have enriched us generously because a community possesses no greater treasure than the dedicated service of its people. And Joe Scanlon, you embody that. You are a role model. You have built a great organization in the Morgan First Aid Squad, and we are in your debt, young man. Congratulations. Come on up. Joe, you wanna say a few words?
No.
Come on, you never -- Any of you?
It's a great pleasure.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you all.
You're great. We certainly are appreciative, and we're in your debt for all that you do. By the way, this is a complete volunteer organization. To qualify, you need 120 hours, and then you have continuous education requirements.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
So, they're remarkable people.
My son, John.
John? How many -- John, how many years are you in?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, so.
My grandson is also a member. So we have three Scanlins, three generations of Scanlins in the Morgan First Aid Squad. Four. No, that's three. Three generations.
Four Scanlins, three generations. Don't get ahead of yourself. Thank you, Joseph. Done?
Thank you, sir.
Morgan First Aid Squad, we salute you. Thank you. You gotta change that to 45 years. It says 44.
Terry.
It's a testament to our town that you have three generations of volunteers. With that, Terry, the next order of business?
Mayor, we have the following proclamation to read into record. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed -- excuse me, with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind, water, cutting -- cut heat, heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for our wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our cities increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Kennedy O'Brien, Mayor of the borough of Sayerville, do hereby acknowledge Arbor Day that was observed on April 25, 2014, and proclaim April 24, 2015 as Arbor Day in the borough of Sayerville, and urge all citizens to support the effort by protecting our trees and our woodlands and support our town's urban forestry program.
Is there a motion?
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next order of business, Terry?
Mayor, I'd like to report of having received from CFO Wayne Karnowski the annual debt statement and annual financial statement, which was filed with the Division of Local Government Services for the year 2014. The copies are on file in the municipal clerk's office. I need an offer -- a motion to receive and file.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next order of business?
We have the introduction of the following ordinance. Ordinance number 278-15, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2.3, Meetings of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Sayerville.
Who's the second on --
Councilman Rittenhouse.
Councilman, would you make the introduction?
Yes, this is -- I'm sorry.
This is first reading.
Introduction.
I move the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law, and a public hearing to be held on February 23, 2015.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions.
Okay. At this time, I'm gonna open the public portion for any questions or comments on the consent agenda. If there's anyone here about our animal control, that is on the consent agenda, and this, if there was any comment to be made on that, this would be the appropriate time. Please come up to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
Michael Pinkowitz, 32 Becker Drive, Parlin, New Jersey. I don't know if I should give this to you ahead of time or not. This is basically information for you all that'll go along with what I say. If you like, I can hand it when I'm done.
Hand it to Terry, if you would, Mr. Pinkowitz.
The first thing I'd like to ask, I noticed the resolution, I believe it was 2015-42. Can you please clarify that this agreement is with the Tinton Falls location of Associated Humane Services?
It is.
It is, okay. I'd like to know what the rationale was for not considering to keep our animal control contact -- contract with Woodbridge?
Woodbridge was doing us a favor. They didn't have the excess capacity, from what they told us.
Okay. It was noted in the meeting minutes dated December 15 that no RFPs had come in. I'm curious when the response from Associated Humane came in, and where --
That I don't know. As I stated earlier, our business administrator has taken leave for the passing of his mother.
I understand.
Our CFO is on a long scheduled holiday week.
Okay.
I couldn't -- I couldn't answer that question with any kind of clarity.
Would you know if any other facilities responded to the RFP?
Terry, do you know?
No, Mayor. That agreement and negotiation of that agreement was done after there were no RFPs received on the date for receipt of.
Okay. I guess I'm just curious as to why Associated Humane Tinton Falls was selected, or why we entered into an agreement with -- or entering into an agreement with them.
Well, I think, one, they had capacity, and, two, their price was probably in the ballpark. Mr. Pinkowitz, our job is to provide services at the lowest reasonable cost.
Well, I do understand that, but I -- as part of the packet, what I provided was a report from 2013 that I wasn't able to find 2014 data that lists the intake, adoption, and euthanasia rates for 107 animal shelters throughout New Jersey. AHS Tinton Falls was one of only seven shelters that reported no statistics at all. Nothing on intake, nothing on euthanasia, nothing. So I'm not sure that we're getting ourselves into a better situation than we did with Helmeta. I don't get a good feeling about any accountability as far as what we would be charged for for them.
Let me ask the borough attorney, did -- do you use them from -- our attorney is also a councilman in Red Bank. Do you use them in Red Bank?
No.
No. You hear anything negative about them?
No, you know what? They've all -- in Monmouth County, where I live, there hasn't been any negative. I know the county supports them. I know that we used to represent Tinton Falls, and I hadn't heard any negative. That doesn't mean it doesn't exist. It just means I have not heard any.
Okay. The other part in the packet is -- well, actually, I don't believe that's in there, but I do have a copy here. I don't know if you're aware that Associated Humane Societies actually filed a lawsuit against the city of Newark in 2011, as well as Garden State Veterinary Services over the possession of Patrick the Pit Bull, hence what Patrick's Law was named after, which strengthened the animal abuse charges in New Jersey. They claimed Patrick has trademark registration number 23699. If you Google that, you'll be able to find a copy of this lawsuit, and you can have this, where their attorney actually called it a cash cow, or called Patrick a cash cow. And they were suing because they were concerned about losing fundraising potential. Now, I understand --
Who was losing fundraising potential?
Associated Humane Societies.
Okay.
Now, I understand there is a balance between services and costs, but I am also very concerned that there are no other options presented, that this is the option we're being told we're going with, and we don't know what else is out there. I don't have a good feeling about AHS. I understand if Woodbridge does not have the capacity at this time to take on Sayerville, but I'm still not concerned that a facility that is 30 minutes away with no traffic in the summer months, it's going to take an hour if you lose your pet to go to see if they're there. They do not advocate for their animals. I don't have a good feeling, and I'm trying to understand the rationale as to why this facility was chosen. What were the qualifications, other than, to use your term, low-cost provider?
Low-cost provider? It didn't seem to be -- I wasn't included with that. Councilman McGill, were you included in these discussions?
Mayor, I can answer some of those questions. I did go down to Tinton Falls. I did do an inspection there. I felt comfortable with what I saw, what I was told. We need to find a home for the animals, obviously. Old Bridge didn't want to take us anymore. I was not comfortable with taking animals up to the Newark area, because still an even longer ride. And I know what you're talking about, people jumping onto Garden State and having to go down to Tinton Falls, but compared to what I saw at Helmeta, I felt that this was a step much more above Helmeta.
Well, respectfully, I think anyone who knows the situation will say anything was a step up from Helmeta.
But we're left with, temporarily at least, until more of these shelters come online, we are left with a limited response to what we want to do for these animals in their best interest. Right now, because Old Bridge would not let us in --
Woodbridge.
Woodbridge, I'm sorry. Woodbridge would not let us in. Tinton Falls seems like a pretty good deal right now. Not for good, but for now.
Now, was Woodbridge the only reason they said they wouldn't take us, because they didn't have the capacity?
They didn't have capacity for us.
Okay.
As soon as this started up, as you know, it was a first-come, first-served, and we thought we were right at the top of the list there, but apparently we weren't.
Okay. The reason I ask that question is there are rumors, and there's discussion amongst the animal community. I'm an animal advocate. I'm part of many groups on Facebook. I deal with a lot of rescues. There is discussion that Woodbridge would not extend with us because we do not support TNR. And I would like some clarification as to whether or not that is true.
Well, I can tell you why I support TNR.
I know you do. You stated during the emergency meeting, you stated specifically during the comments, and I do appreciate that. However, as a town, TNR is not supported.
I'm not concerned at all about the colonies. I learned a lot, actually, from all of this. TNR will diminish the colonies. TNR will bring everything into focus, but unfortunately, there are those who don't feel the same way.
I guess that's it. I mean, the only other thing I'll throw out there, which is in the cover of the packet there, I'm glad you said that Newark was not being considered. Since Tinton Falls didn't report numbers, just to throw this out there, in the Newark facility in 2013, 26.8 percent of all dogs brought into that facility were euthanized. 44.5 percent of all cats were euthanized. That's almost half. If Tinton Falls numbers are even comparable to that, we need to actively seek a different solution.
I -- just so you know, I do commend you for everything that you do. We just lost our dog. He was a rescue, 14 years. He ran the house, not us. So really, I know, I feel for you, really.
If we don't speak for him, no one else will.
If I could just add a little something, Mr. McGill. Are you finished, President McGill?
Yes, yes, thank you.
I noticed that one of your comments here for number one, it says that the Tinton Falls location is 30 minutes away.
I do believe that with the agreement that we reached, there was going to be a truck that was going to actually be parked here at our facilities in the event that a resident loses an animal, rather than having to go all the way to the Tinton Falls location, that they would be able to come here to get their pet.
That is true, yes.
Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
And I do recall, so --
So they would bring the animal to Sayerville?
Well, that there would actually be a truck located here, so in the event that one of our animals is taken in, is called for some reason, and the homeowner discovers that, that rather than having to go to the Tinton Falls location, they would be able to come and retrieve their animal here at our -- and I believe, I think, the part -- isn't it supposed to be parked here at our facility, at the Borough Hall? I don't remember where.
Near Borough Hall, yes.
Near Borough Hall, near Borough Hall. So that was something that I believe when the discussion was being had, that was something that was a positive, even though Tinton Falls was further away. And I definitely hear exactly what you're saying. I came to the mic myself when this was all happening. And it did become a scramble for really many boroughs, because so many people were fleeing Helmeta, some of which at earlier times than what we did. As that started to happen, many facilities did not have the capacity, as we saw with Woodbridge, which left us in quite a situation. What do we do once Woodbridge decided that they would help us in the time being, but we needed to secure a place outside? You'll notice that we only entered into the agreement for one year, and I'm hoping that, considering what happened with Helmeta, that you have a lot of animal activist groups, and you also have legislators that are now watching these types of situations even more strictly than they have before. I really highly doubt, at this point, that any animal control shelter that may or may not have been some type of questionable activities is gonna want to go down the path that Helmeta went. So, but I do agree with you. We do have to look at not just the cost of things, but at the same time, the care that we get. And I believe that with Mr. McGill going in with his inspections, and I believe that Mr. Frankel also did his due diligence in trying to secure a contract that we could support.
Okay. Is it possible to perhaps arrange spot checks, almost random checks, to make sure that what you saw wasn't a dog and pony show, for lack of a better term?
Dog and pony show's a good description. There will be, and I'll be making myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkowitz.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments? Yes. Now, this is just for the consent agenda.
Rachel Collier, 42 Garfield Place, Parlin. Mike, I want to thank you for sharing that this was on the agenda for tonight at the meeting, because it doesn't come up much in discussion. I have to apologize, your name is Mr. McGill?
McGill, yes.
You know, it's really nice that you come up and you say to us that you went and inspected the facility, and you say it's okay, but I do recall an article from the suburban where Mr. Rittenhouse was quoted as saying Helmeta was okay, and a month or two later, we found out it wasn't.
If I could interrupt you for a second? I didn't say it was okay. I said it was better than Helmeta.
That doesn't say much, better than Helmeta.
But that's the best we can do right now.
My concern is that you're distancing local control to other neighborhoods. Now, I just had to call Woodbridge this week, because lo and behold, we actually have feral cats back in Sayerville now that Helmeta's gone. And they seemed very happy to work with a Sayerville resident, as a matter of fact, because I told them I was much more comfortable calling their facility than calling Helmeta. But on January 21, I kind of witnessed Sayerville in action, because when I took notes from the emergency meeting that Mary Novak called, that it was someone had made a comment that the Sayerville police would like a full-time animal control officer back, and I wrote that I wasn't too sure who had made that comment. And on January 21, the Sayerville Police Department posted a picture of an animal at around 9:00 in the morning on their Facebook page. I don't know if I'm a fan of their page. You know, one of the first comments made was, "Oh, my neighbor's dog looks like that." And by 3:30 in the afternoon, the dog had been returned to its owner. Now, you didn't see that with Helmeta, and I don't think you're gonna see it by shipping our animals to Tinton Falls. And you keep talking about controlling costs, but when you eliminated the animal control officer position, I didn't see a drop in my taxes. So if you put it back, would I really notice the increase? You know, I mean, it's all coming down to dollars and cents, and you know, we paid Helmeta, what, $2,000 a month, plus $90 a week for Hotel California for cats? That's what we learned, and it got us nowhere. You know, so you talk about spending, you know, this is the residents of the town, and these are our tax dollars. Well, give us a chance to make a decision on this. Put it out to vote, you know, before you arbitrarily make decisions that affect us as residents and our animals.
What is it you'd like to vote on?
Before we send something down to Tinton Falls, why, you know, why can't we see if people are willing to have animal control back here and keep it at Woodbridge in the interim?
You know, you can do that as a non-binding referendum, you know, that's coming up. We only do what we believe the residents of Sayerville would like us to do, and I've always followed the mandate that my job is to provide municipal service at the lowest reasonable cost available. So if, as I've said to people who wanted sidewalks, I said, "I'll get you valet parking as long as you pay for it." You know, it's not that I'm neither for nor against valet parking, but somebody has to pay for it. So that being said, I would recommend, and I'm not being flippant about this, I recognize the deep passion that you have for this subject, but there is a process, and in New Jersey, you have non-binding referents, but it certainly gives a measure of where the people would want to spend their money. And if this is where they would want to spend the money, then the governing body will spend their money there.
Because the Facebook post was free.
I beg your pardon?
This post was free. Didn't cost anybody.
Oh, I understand that.
But that's the kind of --
But if you wanted to bring -- it's a lot more than just hiring somebody. I spoke to Dr. Chiosi about it, and I said, you know, "Doctor, you know, it's a lot more than just housing the animals." I said, "You have to have personnel, you have to have vehicles." I said, "It's -- you have to invest a substantial amount of capital." And, you know, he said, you know, "As a business at this moment, it wasn't something he could do," which I understand and I respect. We were able to have a good, open exchange. So that being said, it's not just the salary of the individual that you're talking about. You're talking about rigs, you're talking about a facility to house the animals, you're talking about personnel to care for the animals. It's -- remember, Helmeta, when Helmeta built their facility, it was meant to be a revenue generator to help them keep their taxes down. It's a very small town with a very limited tax base, and this was a municipally-owned potential moneymaker. So now they're stuck with a -- they serve 32 towns. They needed 32 towns to make the business model work. So for us to do it singularly, the cost will be commensurate with the services we provide and with the size of the facility, the number of personnel, and the other equipment that's required. It's doable, and I would recommend, if the will of the people, then the governing body will enact it.
It frightens me that you said they had expected to serve 32 communities when everything happened. They were only serving 21.
I thought it was 32. I'll stand corrected.
When I checked.
Even so, 20 --
At the time, when we polled, it was 21 communities they were serving. And in that note, how many --
Had they lost any?
I'm not sure how many they have left, maybe --
No, no, no. When you had the count of 21, had they lost any communities?
I did not check back. That was at the time that Mary Novak called the emergency meeting, was when I checked to see how many.
I think they had lost a number of communities by that time.
I guess my question is, how many communities does Tinton Falls serve?
I don't know.
Well, it sounds like something maybe we should find out before we end up, you know, if it takes 32 communities to make progress.
You know what I would recommend? I would recommend, any of the Sayerville residents who have a passion for this, I would recommend that we contact Tinton Falls. You know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna ask you to put together a committee of six or 10 people of like-mindedness, all right? We'll form it. You can go do the inspections on behalf of the governing body. It would make -- it would work better, because you come in with a different perspective. My eye is always on the bottom line, which is neither good nor bad, but it's just the way that I do it. And if there were six or 10 residents of Sayerville, I'm gonna stress that, I will not entertain any non-resident of Sayerville. Just Sayerville people. Get an odd number, that way if you have a tie, somebody can break it.
I would have to --
Seven or 11, all right? And go and inspect it, make the recommendations. You have to work with the Board of Health now.
Well, the Board of Health is not --
Now, they --
Animal Control doesn't fall under the Board of Health, if I'm correct.
Yes, but they -- it's the police department does.
They do what the council says, and the animal control officer reports to the police.
I would like you to work with the Board of Health, because I need a balance.
You're gonna -- I'm gonna have to pass it on to somebody else, because sadly, after 27 years of leaving here, or living here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I am leaving because of a loss of a sense of community in this town, because of things like this. But I definitely can put it on my Facebook page. I do, while I am not an animal rescuer, I am just a 27-year resident of this town.
Would you work with Mr. Pinkowitz? Mr. Pinkowitz, are you staying in town?
He just happened to share it.
Okay. Work with Mr. Pinkowitz, please, and put it together. That's really what volunteerism's all about. We just had the Morgan First Aid Squad. 45 years, both the squad and its leader, Joe Scanlon. Who was our animal control officer for many, many years?
I remember watching you shoot skunks across -- I remember watching him shoot skunks across the street from my house under my neighbor's car. But at least then, I knew who to complain to when I saw him do that.
Okay. Well, yeah, he chose a man that loved animals. He did what he needed to do, though. So if you would, if you and Mr. Pinkowitz would put this together, and then we would invite you to represent the borough and, and do the research, and, and where we go. But you also need to consider, Mr. Pinkowitz, of doing a non-binding referendum, if in fact, you guys want to do your own, if you think that a Saraval animal shelter is sustaining and can operate, by all means, put it, put it on a non-binding referendum, and let's see what the voters say. I'm not against it. I just, I just haven't had enough people come to me to say, hey, I really want this. And quite frankly, I don't have the facts, you know, either for or against it. So when I don't do that, I spend as little as possible.
Well, the American Humane Society has a very good blog on the euthanasia, the, the data for all the shelters in New Jersey. And American Humane Society, Titten Falls, is pretty high up there, and I know they are tied with Essex County. And so maybe we could tell you the link, and you could educate yourselves.
One of the things that I was told, and I never bothered to validate it, was that a public animal shelter has to euthanize because particularly what we found out the last time with TNR is there aren't enough people adopting the cats, and it just, the cat population just seems to grow in a, in a geometric progression to where Dr. Chiozzi at the time said, hey, I can't take any more cats from the borough. And, and that was really when we had to look for other services.
Correct, and that's why we should support TNR. And Dr. Chiozzi is not the only veterinarian in town. Just put a note on that, okay?
Understood. He served, he's been here almost 40 years himself.
I understand that, I do, but he is not the only veterinarian, okay?
Okay. Good luck wherever you're going, and thank you for all that you've done while you've lived here in Saraval.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Being no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda item. Council President.
Mayor, will the public hearing be closed, and the consent of the agenda resolutions be approved on roll call vote?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
May I have the following resolution to be read in full?
Right ahead.
Resolution 201544. Whereas the mayor and council of the borough of Saraval wishes to apply for funding of approximately $60,000 with a match of $276,079 for an approximate project, total cost of $336,079 per project under the state of New Jersey called Safe and Secure Communities Grant Program. Whereas the mayor and council of the borough of Saraval has reviewed the accompanying application and has approved said request. And whereas the project is a joint effort between the Department of Law and Public Safety and the Borough of Saraval for the purpose described in the application. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of Saraval that one, as a matter of public policy, the Borough of Saraval wishes to participate to the fullest extent possible with the Department of Law and Public Safety. Two, the Attorney General will receive funds on behalf of the applicant. Three, the Division of Criminal Justice shall be responsible for the receipt and review of the applications and said funds. Four, the Division of Criminal Justice shall initiate allocations to each applicant as authorized.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor, we need to open up to the public.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to open up that to the public for any questions or comments. Are there any questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the public portion to be closed, and the resolution be approved on roll call vote.
Roll call.
Second motion.
Second. Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Rittenhouse, would you please do administration and finance?
Yes. Minutes and department reports. Move the following minutes reports be received and filed. Board of Education minutes, January 6th and 20th, 2015. Municipal clerks report for the month of December, 2014. Investment activity report for the month of November, 2014.
Second.
Anything else, councilman, on administration of finance?
I do not believe so.
Okay. Thank you. Planning and zoning, Councilman Buchanan.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the following minutes be approved, be received and filed. The Middlesex County Planning Board minutes of December 9th, 2014. Construction officials' report for the month of December, 2014. Zoning and code enforcement report for the month of December, 2014, which is included in their 2014 annual report. The fire prevention reports for the months of November and December, 2014. Planning Board minutes of January 7th, 2015, and the Board of Adjustment minutes of December 10th, 2014.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Anything else, councilman?
Just one thing. I wanted to bring up for the discussion now. Got that email regarding the potential, the actual litigation and the attorney costs.
That's going to go in a closed session.
But it's not, we're not, we're not talking about the actual litigation, though.
It's, it's under litigation.
But would representation cover that?
We're talking about representation.
I don't know what you guys are talking about.
Go ahead. What are you, bring, what are you doing? Well, I just had concerns. I saw the email again about the-
It'll be discussed during the agenda portion for discussion. Under the new format.
That's up to you, Mike.
No?
Well, they can talk about, I'm not quite sure. Right now, this is on planning and zoning, correct? So why don't we wait to the appropriate part to bring up?
Okay, that's fine. I'll respond. Progress.
Okay. Public Works, Councilwoman Kilpatrick.
Minutes and department reports. Move the following minutes reports be received and filed. Number one, the rent levelling board minutes of January 13th to 2015. Number two, the Public Works report, buildings and grounds, parks, recycling, roads, garage services, sanitation. Number three, office on aging report, all for the month of December, 2014.
Second.
Is there anything else, Councilwoman?
Yes, I would like to take a few moments to say that over the past couple of weeks, sitting here now in my new position and having the opportunity to work with the Public Works Director Bernie Bailey, I've had the opportunity to go into the Public Works Garage multiple times. I think I surprised the gentleman a couple of times, making my way through during the snowstorm. Some of the things that I've observed, and after listening to multiple comments from the public, I am overwhelmed and astounded by what the Public Works Department has been able to do, working out of the garage in which they have. I looked at the news a couple, well, what was it, a couple of days back when the Edison Public Works Garage went up in smoke. And in Saraval, as soon as you see any type of fire now, we've had quite a year, quite a couple of months, and in watching what the gentlemen do in those couple of bays, I started to get shivers down my spine because I said to myself, you know what? I think that if we don't take the time to really take a look at the conditions that our gentlemen are working in, I don't want to see us on the news as being the next Edison. I know that during the first storm, and we've dodged about three pretty serious storms here, Boston's still digging out of several feet, I watched as five trucks went down, and the men had to work out of bays that couldn't even house the size of those particular trucks, trying to move them in and out, not having the parts, watching electrical things go wrong. And these guys never stopped. They never wavered. They worked 36 hours, sometimes longer. And I was just beyond impressed by the amount of work that they put forth to make sure that we can get in and out of our houses daily. I also wanted to comment on the fact that even our new superintendent of schools made it the point to put out on his telephone call and on his email blast that thanks to the public workers, they were able to not have to delay the start of school, at least last week a couple of times, because the roads were in such good condition, and our gentlemen were able to move as fast as they did. Having said that, there were a couple of other things that I just wanted to bring up. We do have an ordinance, and I believe that everybody received the reverse 911 call with the last storm, reminding people at certain roads, make sure they remove their vehicles, so that way the gentlemen can do their jobs in a more efficient way. Please heed that call, so that way we can clear those roads and make things safer for everyone. In addition, also, please be mindful that when you are removing your snow, that especially when the plazas have already come down, that we don't deposit the snow back onto the streets. That is an ordinance, and I did tell the gentleman that I would bring that up here today, and I know that residents are pretty mindful of that, but it does become an issue. Having said all of those things, I just have two more pieces I'd like to bring up. We are having some serious issues regarding our salt dome, which we don't technically have. Things are getting rather hairy from the county level, where you have to have trucks coming in and out at all times, and we don't know when we're going to get our salt deliveries. So we have to have somebody there waiting on call, hour after hour after hour, which is man-hours, and it's money. Time is money. So I really think moving forward, and again, having the opportunity to work with these gentlemen, we need to start investing in our public works to make sure that we don't end up in the types of situations that other towns seek. Last but not least, I received an email by a gentleman by the name of Jacob Epstein for a YMCA, New Jersey, to be able to utilize local parks for their program. I'm going to turn that over to our Parks Department to take a look at that and see if we would be able to afford them the space in order to run their program. This is a youth-type activity, so I just wanted to make that public here so that they knew that that would be turned over to the Public Works Department. Other than that, progress.
Thank you. Recreation, Councilman Melendez.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the following minutes reports be received and filed. The Recreation Director report for the month of December, 2014. I have-
Is there a second? Anything else, councilman?
Yeah, a couple of things. We had our first recreation meeting this past week, and I have a couple of notes here from Mr. Us. He would like everyone to know that the registration for Mommy and Me at the Rec Center and Little Kids Playtime at Kennedy Park is ongoing. Call the Rec Office for information at 732-390-7096. Next, bus trips to Yankee Stadium. June 19th, Yankees versus Detroit. July 17th, Yankees versus Seattle Mariners. August 21st, Yankees versus Cleveland Indians. All trips are Friday nights with the bus leaving the Rec Center at 4:15. Bus trip tickets are $90. Tickets sold first come, first served basis. Seats are located in Road 10 through 12, Section 130, lower left field. Price includes tickets to the game, bus, parking, and driver tips. Please bring your own refreshments for the ride. I'm a Met fan, so I think we're going to have to change that law and allow Met tickets next year. Call the Rec Office for information, 390-7096. A couple of other things. We decided, and I'll announce the next meeting, the dates for Saraval Day, the Independence Day celebration, and a couple of other activities that Jerry will allow me to present next meeting. And I think that's it for today. So, progress.
Thank you. Water and Sewer, Councilman Rittenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Minutes and department reports. Move the following minutes reports to be received and filed. Water and Sewer Directors' report for the month of December, 2014, and 2014 annual report.
Is there a second? Next, next item?
Okay. Under comments, I had asked at the last two meetings for clarification, HomeServe, which is providing the warranty service for the residents. This is the one where you can buy the warranty to, for the water line going from the curb or going from the street into your house. The question was, is would the box be covered? I've had four or five residents call me who want to sign up for this. It's due, you have to make your decision by February 13th, or at least the initial one. My question was, I wanted to see the warranty, because the answers that the public is getting is it covers leaks. But when they ask specifically about the box, they cannot give an answer. I personally called this afternoon, and I said, what about the box? That's because that was the whole basis of us bringing them in here, was to cover that box because of the people down the street who had a $12,000 bill, which eventually got down to $7,000, but they had to pay because the residents are responsible. But if it's not covering the box itself, I'm not sure that that warranty or that company, you know, is doing what we thought they were going to do. When I called today, I pressed for the answer, and finally, the person on the phone said to me, oh, I have to get my advisors who handle your account to call you back because I can't answer that question. They do not know whether that's going to be covered or not. So it's, you know, I'm not sure what to do. My suggestion might be you can do a monthly payment plan. People may want to start doing a monthly payment plan, then if we find out if the box isn't covered, then just cancel the plan, which can be done. I'm not sure we want to have our residents put out $70 or $76 all at one time, you know, if that's not going to be covered. That's a very expensive proposition if that box in the middle of the street goes and we have to dig up the box. And I've been asking now for over a month to get that answer, and we haven't gotten that answer. I didn't get a copy of that warranty that I requested, and now we're at crunch time for that. So I think that's something we have to look at.
All right. If you give me the name and number, I'll, with Mr. Frankel's mother passing, I'll, I'll take the ball and run with that.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll talk to you after the meeting and get the information.
All right. I have it with me. Okay. Other than that, progress.
Thank you. Public Safety, Council President McGill.
Thank you, Mayor. Move the following minutes and reports be received and filed. Court Administrator, Police Chief, Board of Health, registrar and county reports for the month of December, 2014.
Second.
Anything else?
Yeah, a couple of comments. I met with the chief a few weeks ago, and I'm going to go out on a limb here. Come hell or high water, chief, those cameras are going to get there. And I also found out that their radios, their communication system is antique and antiquated, whatever you want to call it, atrocious. And we've really got to take a look at investing in their communication system because with my background, I know how important it is. There are dead zones all over Saraval, and dead zones leave to, leave to dead cops, and I, I'm not going to stand for that. So we've really got to look into this. On another hand, I have some appointments I'd like to make.
Point of order for a second. The January 29th meeting, which was not held, I am filing a complaint that the Open Public Meetings Act was not followed. If that complaint is upheld, then the mayor would have a chance to do appointments again. Four members of this council all collaborated and told the clerk that they would not be there. That, to me, is a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, along with my objection of the-
You were telling me how I collaborated when I was under five feet of snow in Boston.
Along with my, along with my objection to the January 12th meeting. I have been in contact with the prosecutor's office.
Can I comment at this time? I, I just really am getting tired of having the comment that there's some type of collaboration. We went through this last time as well. I didn't realize that I was back in work or back in school. If it would appease you, Mr. Rittenhouse, I'll gladly submit the doctor's note that was given to me by the podiatrist that had to do an emergency surgery on my daughter's foot at the age of seven. And if you would like to be the one holding her down as she screamed and they stuck needles in her toe, we can talk about the way we collaborated as a party. So I'll gladly submit that.
Can I continue before I go to the big house? The Financial Advisor, Phoenix Advisors.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second.
Roll call. Special Counsel, other matters.
Roll call.
I don't have much time. I don't have much time.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Melendez, second?
Second. Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
Next item?
Special Counsel, other matters. File and Kravis.
Did they submit a-
Second.
Did they submit a-
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
File and Kravis.
Does a motion remain seconded? Roll call.
Do you second that motion, Mayor?
I did.
Thank you.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes. Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
Board of Adjustment for a four-year term, Mr. William Henry.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
That's not collaboration.
Next item?
Board of Adjustment, Standby Number Two, Anthony Esposito.
Second.
Roll call. Which one is he filling in here? I thought we only had a four-year --
Bill, Mr. Henry is taking on the full year, four-year term, and Mr. Esposito will be the alternate.
We already have an alternate appointment, a two-year alternate appointment was Phil So we only had the one spot available for a four-year member replacing Rosetta Fisher.
Two alternates.
There was only one alternate that was up this year, Councilman.
One second. I'll clarify that.
Okay. I'm sorry if I'm wrong.
I thought we were moving Bill Henry up from the alternate two, which just left out a vacancy, and there was only other one other person.
Yeah, Bill Henry was the alternate.
William Henry was alternate number two, so then we'll be replacing alternate number two by Anthony Esposito, is that correct?
Correct, ma'am.
Replacing William Henry. Okay, who seconded that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Counselperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
Next item?
The Board of Health, Mr. Kenneth. Osheski, yes, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. That was Board of Health is --
Revolinsky.
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 Revolinsky, I'm sorry.
There's two people who put their applications in, right?
There were.
That's my handwriting, I'm sorry.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
Next item?
Board of Health, Mr. William Henry.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
Commission on Aging, Mr. Ken Osheski.
Second.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
Okay, Patricia Dunn put in her application for reappointment as a non-voting member on Commission of Aging for a three-year term. She's with Twin Borough Therapy. She's a physical therapist. Is that under consideration?
No, it is not.
Thoma's Dunn.
I didn't see --
Thank you, but no.
That just came in, just as I walked in the meeting. It was handed to me by one of the commissioners on the Office on Aging.
It's just a reappointment, right?
It's a reappointment.
Next item?
Can we get that copied for the next meeting?
Sure will.
You can bring it to the next meeting, I have no problem. Cultural Arts Council, Mike Tumbleton.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Melendez, you second?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
Next item?
Human Relations Commission, three-year member, Carol Gaitis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Is that one of the new applications that we have on file?
Yeah, Human Relations Commission, yeah.
And who seconded that motion?
I did.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
Next item?
Next item, Housing Authority, Mr. Ronald Green.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
Next item?
Mayor, Councilman Buchanan wanted to bring something up before. Am I allowed to bring that up now?
Sure.
Okay. This has to do with the special counsel for the Temple litigation. I'm recommending Wiener and Lesniak.
Well, since I haven't seen anything, this is a little ridiculous. This really is. This is a terrible affront to the borough of Saraville. This is probably the biggest legal case we have this year, the most important litigation we have. A motion has to be responded to by next week, and you're bringing a completely new law firm in who is, in my opinion, a B-grade law firm. I'm really disappointed in my colleagues for doing that. I had, I, the attorney from Dakotas who specializes in this, sent me an email this afternoon saying that we had to, that the governing body needed to do something. I sent the email out about 3 o'clock, and I just knew instinctively that your caretakers would find somebody to trade it off for and put the borough at great risk. So as I was taught as a young man, yeah, I can't be angry with people for being consistent. I can only be angry with them for not being inconsistent. This is a terrible, terrible day for Saraville.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you have a motion here?
You guys are really offensive, truly offensive to the people of Saraville.
Mayor, if I may, you know, one of the things I was considering was because we got that email, and originally, they asked for $10,000, then they asked for another $10,000, now they're looking for $40,000. I mean, I understand we're in litigation, we need to get representation up there, but I mean, how much more can we keep on going on that? And so I'm going to second it.
Dan, listen, just raise your hands, and then you don't have to spend anything. Give up. I mean, that's all you need to do. I mean, Thomas Abadi said, as we discussed, the Temple filed a discrimination lawsuit against the borough, filed its opposition to our motion to dismiss their complaint last week. Our reply papers are due in federal court on February 17th. Federal court, Dan, that explains the increase in money. And the judge has scheduled oral arguments for March 2nd. We have at this point reached the cap previously established by the governing body for the initial phase of the litigation. We are now under a court-ordered schedule that cannot be readily changed. The briefing schedule was set a couple of months ago, and it is unusual for a federal judge to schedule oral arguments on this type of motion. But we received such a notice in this case, and once it happens, the date generally cannot be --
I'm still, I didn't finish with his comments as I was reading of it, I'll go ahead and take the roll call, Councilman.
Dave, whether you like it or not, I'm under comment. The date generally cannot be changed absent extraordinary circumstances. Unfortunately, this case has proven more complex than initially anticipated, and with the scheduling of argument in the federal court, we will not be able to proceed under our existing budgetary cap. I estimate that it will cost approximately $15,000 to $20,000 to complete the reply papers, to prepare for and present all arguments on this case of March 2nd, and address any issues directly relating to the motion practice. Accordingly, I respectfully seek additional authorization in the amount of $20,000 to proceed. We must get to work immediately on the preparation of reply papers in order to file by February 17th, and immediately thereafter, I must begin preparing for the argument. Should the borough wish to fund the next phase of litigation after oral argument, I would suggest an additional $20,000 for a total authorization of $40,000. Otherwise, I would anticipate having to come back to the governing body shortly after the argument for additional authorization. I cannot proceed with the task of meeting these deadlines absent additional authorization. Should the governing body wish to designate successor counsel, I strongly advise that it do so immediately so as to provide enough term for that person to get up to speed. Thank you for your consideration of the foregoing. Thomas Abadi of the law firm Dakotas. I really think we're putting the borough at great peril. But that was never an impediment when you can trade it off for legal work in some other town. So that being said, there's a motion made and seconded.
Counselperson Buchanan.
Wait a minute, we need discussion on this motion.
Just second.
That was, there's a second. No, it's motion, second, and then discussion. Those are the rules which we adopted, which my colleagues always like to refer to. So we're in discussion. Am I correct, counselor?
Correct.
Thank you.
Right ahead.
I agree with everything the mayor just said. You're making an appointment. What are the fees that they're going to charge for this, Mr. President?
They're doing $20,000 and the same hourly rate that Dakotas was doing.
What was that? I haven't seen a proposal. So you guys, since sometime this afternoon and now, in the last several hours, you're like incredible.
Again, who is aware of this and the proposal? We did not receive copies of this proposal.
We have had proposals from Wiener Lesniak for multiple law assignments throughout our borough. They came in January 1, but we did, I did have a discussion, and it was $20,000, and they're agreeing to the same as Dakotas. Again, in that email, he said straight out that he did not anticipate going to federal court, but yet everyone knew that we were trying to protect the borough, and it would get to that far.
Councilman, if you remember, our initial thing was to try to negotiate it out without going to court.
Right, and that didn't work, and then it went to the $10,000, and then now it's $20,000, and then additional $20,000.
Dan, I'm disappointed. I'm very disappointed.
Thank you, Dan.
I'm disappointed that it's ballooning this much.
May I just adjourn the discussion?
This is going to continue, and they're going to be paying to get the information from Dakotas also, which will be an additional cost.
Not only that, it's just that the Lesniak law firm is not a particularly good law firm. And anyway, okay, time to bring in the B and C team. Must have been a good trade. Any other comments? Then let the travesty proceed.
Counselperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
And for the record, this is the first time we've ever appointed a law firm without the entire governing body and myself as the mayor seeing a proposal. So this is most certainly out of the regular way we do business. It is an insult to the people of Saraville. It's truly terrible. What else do you have there, Council President?
Actually, Mayor, it's your show now.
Hold on, before you finish, I just have one.
Okay, go ahead.
So let me ask you a question. We have a snow day on Monday. I get an email, can I come to a council meeting on Thursday? I responded, I can't. Okay, so how's that? A, number one, the collaboration nonsense, because you're sitting there collaborating everything this man says, but let's neither here nor there. Mayor, I could have came Friday, Monday, how come you didn't call anyone?
Because it's the clerk's position to set up the meeting.
So why did you set up the meeting, knowing that no one was going to come?
That didn't come about till Thursday. Now, Councilman Melendez, it has been my experience that you have no problem calling from Brazil or wherever else your job takes you, as does anybody else sitting up here.
And I responded that day that I couldn't. It was the first day returning from travel.
Listen, it is what it is.
But I don't understand why.
Do you mean you had this proposal on Thursday?
No, I was emailed earlier, and I said no.
Okay. No, no, you had this legal proposal for this new offer.
I'm not talking about the legal proposal, I'm talking about your comment earlier.
We did not, I did not know that.
Why did you call the meeting if, so you didn't know until Thursday?
Till Thursday afternoon.
Okay.
No, I didn't really know till we were here.
Mary Novak spoke for the four of you in an email to the clerk.
I responded myself.
Okay. All right, is there anything else?
May I speak?
First of all, Counselor, unless I ask you, you're not running this meeting, are you?
Thanks.
As great a travesty as this legal appointment was tonight.
I just want everyone to know, just like the mayor.
If you had shame, you would feel it, but obviously you don't.
I have a day job, and I work all of my hours around the council. I'm on more committees than anyone else, and I make all of those committee meetings also. I was ready for that Monday morning meeting. I had a meeting in Boston that Thursday, and I, unless everyone's been living under a rock, we all know what Boston looked like on Thursday. I was ready for Monday night. I heard nothing about Thursday night until Thursday afternoon. There was no email from a Mary Novak, a conspiracy, you give me too much credit if you see there's conspiracy here, to do something like this. I was in Boston on business. I make sure I attend all of my council and my committee meetings, and all the commissioners on those committees know that I attend those meetings. And Mayor, you should know just as well, because you know me well enough to know how much I travel.
Anything else, Council President?
Mayor, can I just ask? Can I just ask one thing?
Absolutely.
When I send out an email, when I am rescheduling a meeting, and I did send that email out of a copy of the notice to the newspapers, to everyone sitting here, and as much as I'm the one that has to schedule those meetings, can someone kindly, each individual council person, call me, email me directly?
What day did you send, did you send the notice out?
As soon as we rescheduled the meeting. As soon as we rescheduled the meeting, that notice went out. I stayed late to do it. And, but in as much as I have to schedule it, and I don't want the heat coming down on me as to when, who did what, when, kindly, please, email me, call me, and if we don't have a quorum, then we can go ahead and schedule the meeting, but I didn't find out that we didn't have a quorum till later that Thursday, or possibly not having a quorum, showing up here and doing what we had to do. So please, kindly. You all have my phone number in my email.
As a matter of fact, it was Monday afternoon when I got a report from the state government that the governor had declared a state of emergency and sent the state workers home early, and then Terry and I were in discussion, and Dan Frankel, and so that's when the meeting was canceled and rescheduled for Thursday night. Terry got the notice out to the papers and the notice to the other council people. So obviously, something is amiss. All right.
Well, I'm not, I'm just asking if everyone can please just notify me. Thank you.
Council President, are we doing any police promotions tonight?
Yes, we are, ma'am.
All right, well, why don't we do it under your minutes?
Okay.
Police promotions?
Yeah, you're on the agenda, aren't you?
That's the next meeting. Isn't that the next?
We're going to do them tonight.
No, we're going to do them tonight. Through Cassidy and --
Four surprises, but this is a good surprise.
Yeah. Alfie and --
If you proceed, Council President?
Any moment, Mr. Mayor.
On the next agenda. Agenda meeting, agenda meeting, agenda.
I saw it on the...
Is it on one of the resolutions?
It's on the fourth page top. Fourth page, Dave.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the agenda, sir.
Got it.
Which meeting is that?
The agenda.
That's the next meeting.
It'll never fit everybody in the room, Terry.
What am I, what is going on? What am I doing?
Terry, if I knew, I would be the first to know.
Can I continue with it then?
Absolutely.
This is under the business administrator.
Does someone add the next meeting?
Yes.
Dave, get it done now. I mean, you hired this law firm. You can most certainly promote two police officers who are well-deserved.
All right, okay. Oh, with pleasure. Under public safety, appointing Thomas Cassidy to the title of police lieutenant as per civil service promotional procedures effective January 27th, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor, let me just be clear on what we're doing. Is this a motion to appoint him tonight, and we're going to have a resolution memorializing the council's action at the next meeting?
Yes, yes, but we're appointing him tonight. We'll memorialize it at the next meeting. God willing, the votes remain the same.
Just want to know what we're doing here, Mayor. Counselperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Next.
Appointing Alfred Gowron to the title of police sergeant as per civil service promotional procedures effective January 27th, 2015.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Melendez.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Thank you, council president.
You're quite welcome, ma'am.
Okay, with that, I'm going to make Joe Crisafi of Ash Terrace my assistant chief of staff.
Can you spell his last name, Mayor? Thank you.
Okay, there is no BA report, there's no CFO report. Jay Cornell.
No, there are no reports at this meeting.
Borough attorneys' report.
No report.
At this time, I'm going to open the public portion for questions or comments on any and all issues. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Bill?
Bill Henry Orchard Street, I just have one question for our Rittenhouse about the water warranty. You mentioned a box. I wasn't sure what you meant by that.
Out of the connector, and I'm not the expert on this, but out of the connector...
Art, can you speak into the mic, please?
Thank you. At the street, where the connector is, where the water pipe is, there's a box that directs the water into your house.
Jay, can you give an engineer...
There's a corporation on the main, which is in the street, and there's a curb box that's located right behind the curb. I'm not sure which one you're referring to.
The one that's at the main, which is the one that broke.
The corporation that's at the main in the street. That's what your question is.
Right, which is the responsibility of the homeowner.
That is correct, yes.
That's the one. That's the one that broke down the street, and the people had that, they came here to a council meeting, and were probably here with an initial bill of twelve thousand dollars, which eventually went down to seven thousand.
That was at GM Venko's, wasn't it?
Believe so. But this company cannot give me an answer as to whether that is covered or not.
I wasn't sure what the box was.
And the whole reason we went into this was thinking that that was covered. So if it's not, that's a whole different story.
Is that the box in the street? Is that what you're saying?
Right at the main, where the water main is, there's, what do you call it?
Corporation.
A corporation. From there to your house. That's what we want covered under these warranties. Right now, all they're saying is, well, if there's a leak, we'll cover it. Well, is that connection covered? They can't give an answer to that.
I guess Dan would have to answer them. It was my understanding it was covered from the box back. I have to go through the mail.
Well, wait, from the street, from the street back, which was my understanding also, which was everybody's understanding.
Right, and you're saying they...
But now, when people call and ask that question, they're not getting a straight answer. I couldn't get it. I personally called today, reading from my letter, use that eight hundred number. They have to have an advisor get back to me within forty-eight hours. So I will keep you posted.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm going to open the public portion again. Questions or comments? Ken, Chuck, rather.
Good evening. Before I start, I'd like to echo your sentiments, Mayor, and offer Mr. Frankel our condolences for the passing of his mother.
Chuck, if you could, for the record, state your name and...
My name is Chuck Kelly. I live at 93 Reed Hill Road, Morganville, New Jersey. I'm a retired police officer. I worked here for twenty-eight years. I retired in 1999 due to a job-related injury. Currently, I represent as its president the Saraville Retired Police Officers Association, and I represent directly and indirectly fifty-four retired police officers. Before I go any further, I'd like to praise the clerical staff of the borough and the finance department and the clerk's office for the outstanding job they've been doing with me trying to locate some of these documents. On about 12:27, I came into possession of a letter from Aetna Insurance Company to the borough of Saraville. It indicates here that the effective date, January 1, 2015, that they will be doing the medical benefits, and they are providing, quote, "equal to or better benefits than currently provided by Horizon." On December 31st, based on this letter, I filed a Oprah request at the borough clerk's office for specific information relative to the policy that the borough entered into with Aetna. I received some documents, but all the documents that I received from the borough were outdated, no longer in effect, and currently, the medical benefits that the policy issued by Aetna apparently hasn't even been written yet. There's been no insurance cards given to anyone yet, and some of my retirees are now facing deductibles when I go to see their doctors. We never had those before. On January 27th, I wrote a letter to Mr. Frankel informing him that I have not received the documents that are requested, and here it is, February 9th, and I have not even received a phone call from Mr. Frankel relative to this letter. However, I did receive a letter in the mail dated December 30th from Mr. Frankel. This letter was received 1/9/15 at my home, and the letter says, "Dear retiree, the purpose of this letter is to notify you that the borough is changing medical and dental insurance providers from Blue Cross and Blue Shield to Aetna effective February 1, 2015." That's all it says. There's nothing in here about coming in for a meeting, an open enrollment meeting, if the retirees had any questions from Aetna, nothing. My problem with this is the fifty-four retirees that I represent combined have over seventeen-hundred years of dedicated service to this borough, and they're being disrespected. And he's not here, but I'm going to have to lay the blame on the business administrator because he's just not responding to any of the information that I need. So I just want to make my complaint. Do you have any idea when Mr. Frankel will be coming back?
Chuck, he's supposed to be back Wednesday, but if you can send a list of what it is you want, just send it to the, the easy email is mayor@saraville.com. I'll get it over to the insurance agent or broker and have them contact you directly, and then you can go over it with them.
Well, all the information's up at the clerk's office. I dropped letters off, copies of the Oprah request, and nothing's being responded to. And I've been informed...
What is it that you seek, Chuck?
Well, we're trying to do a benefits comparison. We want to see if the advertised propaganda from Aetna equal to or better than we had with Horizon is an accurate statement. We haven't received anything from Aetna, so we have nothing to compare. Here we are, ten days into the new policy, and nobody knows what they're doing.
Let me see if I can set up a meeting. Who else is on the committee?
For the retirees?
Yeah.
Bill Gavron and Mike Burns.
Okay. I'll try to set up a meeting this week for you guys.
Okay.
All right?
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Who do you want me to contact?
You can contact me.
I don't have your contact information.
I have the contact information, Mayor.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Chuck. Any other questions or comments in the open? Yes, Bill. Welcome back. Thank you. Bill Gavron, Orchard Street, I'd like to ask a few questions about this water department insurance. How many water lines do we replace in the borough of Saraville during the course of a year? Well, this is for the laterals, Bill. I understand what it's for, but what I'm asking is how many of those laterals are replaced in the borough over the course of a year? I don't know. Jay, would you have any idea?
I don't know.
We can try and get you a number. Okay, because what I'm asking is you would have to get a plumbing permit, I'm sure, to open up the street or a street opening permit, et cetera. And I mean, we're talking about saving all kinds of money here and tacking on to the homeowner. How much is it, seventy-some dollars for the whole year, or is it... Well, I think the question that Councilman Rittenhouse has is, what are you getting for the seventy dollars? So if Mr. GM Venko down the street, if his total cost started at thirteen and then negotiated down to seven, or however he got it down to seven, what exactly did that encompass, and how much of that seven thousand would this insurance policy have paid? That's my question, is would it be better for us to have maybe a self-insurance policy where we charge maybe every homeowner in the borough an extra ten dollars on their water bill, and we pick up this expense if there isn't that many water lines breaking? I mean, let's be honest, I lived in my house for thirty-some years. I haven't replaced a water line, knock on wood, that it doesn't break when I go home, but... I'm not crazy about the borough going into more businesses, but... But what I'm saying is if there's only twenty or thirty water lines in the whole borough that are replaced there in the course of a year, and we're going to charge forty-thousand homeowners seventy dollars, there's a lot of money to be made for the borough. You'll go in the insurance business? Well, that's, you know... I know I had a friend who lived up, anyway, he asked me about this policy, and I said, I told him what I knew and how it originated, and I recommended that he go see his homeowner's insurance agent, which he did. It was a State Farm guy in Parlin. I can't remember his name, very decent guy. And this is what came back to me, the State Farm agent said, he said, he couldn't write a policy like this. He said, you know, for seventy dollars a year, he said, if you get eighty, you're ahead. But, you know, we still, where I get nervous is where a city councilman is not getting a response from this company. That makes me very uncomfortable. Then you can understand the retirees' frustration when we try and find out what kind of health benefits we have. I mean, here again, we entered into a contract with a company to insure homeowners. Here, we enter into a contract with Aetna to insure the retirees. They're telling us they don't even know if they cover our dental plan. We don't have any cards. I went to the doctor recently. I didn't know that our insurance changed. My blood work was sent to the wrong lab, so I'm not sure who's picking the tab up for that. Okay. Well, Bill, we'll find out. I don't have answers for these questions. Okay. And my last comment is to the council president. I'm very sad to hear that our radio system is as bad as you say, because when I was here as a police captain before I retired, I was very instrumental in working and developing the system that we had. Let me tell you, we were probably the best in the county, if not in the state, at the time when we originally installed that. We were able to talk on a portable radio all the way out into Jamesburg Park out in Jamesburg. I was in New York City doing an investigation at the time, and we were using our handheld radios in the middle of New York City talking to police headquarters. So I'm very sad to hear that this system has gone as bad as it has, and if you need any assistance, I would certainly be willing to...
Captain, I appreciate, I appreciate greatly your comments.
Okay. So thank you, that's all I have. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments during the open public portion? Okay, we're gonna...
Mayor, if you don't mind.
Beg your pardon?
Mind I interrupt for a second?
I'll go right ahead.
Okay. We need to talk about a discussion on salary changes, and I believe we have to winter close on that.
That's at the next meeting.
Correct. That's at the next meeting, okay. Now, the next meeting is supposed to happen in that small room, so if I can get a show of hands of how many people are so enthralled with this meeting that they want more and will come to the next meeting. Can I see a show of hands to see? I just need to find out if there's room, you know, if we're going to go through this exercise to go in there, and then I can't accommodate everybody and we come back here. One? All right. If it's all the same to the council, I just assume we stay here, because we're not going to fit all these people in there.
Well, not with you and I in there.
Seven people. Yes, I have no problem with that.
All right. So we're going to, we're going to close this and then reopen.
Mayor, I move that we close the public portion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, is the format now that we close this meeting?
Yes, Mayor.
Oh, my God.
Just one quick question. Closed session, is that only in the other meeting?
Yes. You can have a closed session anytime you want, but that's where I put it on the agenda.
Okay.
We're two meetings.
Okay.
We're two meetings, yeah.
Oh, my God. Okay, motion to adjourn.
It's all moved.
Is there a second?
No. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, would everyone please stand for a...
Mayor, can I go get my stuff out of the other room, please?
No. Go ahead.
Karen, I'm getting it.
I'm getting it.
We're taking a break. Mr. Pinkelwitz, you have my email, so like-minded, reasonable people. Thank you. Thank you for volunteering. Thank you, ma'am. Bill, you're going to miss a good part. You guys are missing a good part if you leave.
I think it was the GM Venko's neighbor. I think they got up and actually spoke on that neighbor's behalf. I'm pretty sure. Not that it's a major thing.
Chief Burns, a pleasure to see you again.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody leaving the chair for the next meeting? No, I'm good to go. Something changed. No.
I do. Lieutenant Mannion, very good to see you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, you also.
Well, good.
Okay. No, not yet. Okay. Oh, this is done.
No.
This is...
That's me, so I don't know what I'm asked.
Right.
I'm ready, Mayor.
Okay. Would everyone please stand for a short prayer and salute to our flag? God grant us the wisdom to make those decisions in the best interest of our residents. Salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to do the work for "God grant us the wisdom to make those decisions in the best interests of our residents." Salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to do the work for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Terry, statement of publication.
Mayor, this agenda meeting of the mayor and council being held on the ninth day of February 2015 has been advertised in accordance with the Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975.
Roll call.
Councilpersons Buchanan...
Here.
Kilpatrick...
Here.
McGill...
Yeah.
Melendez...
Here.
Rittenhouse...
Here.
All business.
Well, under all business, this ordinance was introduced at the regular meeting, and the public hearing was set for February the 23rd.
All right, let's go to new business. Ordinances for discussion. Ordinance 279-15A, hunting and fishing regulations and permitting weapons and hunting methods in the seasons. Is there any discussion on this? Ordinance...
So, Mayor, this ordinance will then be introduced at the February 23rd meeting.
Who will introduce that?
I will.
You will? Ordinance 280-15A, disqualification of volunteers for appointment. This was the ordinance that some people talked to me about for Patty Birch, because Patty has run Saro Day, and then she got married. Matter of fact, I performed the wedding ceremony. And she moved to Olbridge. Now, the one thing, you know, when I read this, I mean, there's, there's probably going to be objections to this, but the other thing, we have been trying to appoint the Malara brothers to, I think, the Human Relations Commission. And the whole thing is, they live across Ernston Road, not Ernston Road, Bourntown Road in Olbridge. They live up by you, Terry.
Yes, they do.
And these are great guys. They're twins. They, they spent their whole career as teachers in the high school.
Middle school.
Middle school. You couldn't ask for, for better, for better men. And, you know, if we're gonna do this, I mean, this is strictly, to me, a rifle shot because for Patty, uh...
Well, Patty or anybody else who, I mean, in my opinion, if you're gonna donate your time, and then you...
Ricky, I had a talk with some of the people from the rec department who were, who were in favor of Patty staying on. Now, that being said, it, it makes the scope very narrow, because you have to have continuity, et cetera, et cetera. Now, none of this, you know, I'm thinking of the Malara brothers also. So, I would ask the attorney, if it's within his skill set, to redo this so that it's not as restrictive as this one is, and gives the governing body more flexibility in the event that, that the governing body would like to appoint people to boards or commissions who are not Saro residents.
Mayor, I think...
I don't think we want to do that. So, do you want to introduce another ordinance change?
Oh, no, I think, I think, I think you can do more work on this. I realize Patty was appointed secretary, this is very odd, but Patty was appointed secretary to the Rec Commission last week, Rec Advisory Board. But, it is what it is. But, but this is so restrictive. I mean, it's strictly for Patty. This is just written for Patty.
It's for anyone who's on a board and they move.
Ricky, come on, let's get realistic on this.
So, do you think someone who's been on the board for nineteen years can no longer, they move? I mean, it's hard enough to get volunteers. And you're just saying the same thing, right? You want more volunteers outside the borough.
Hey, Ricky?
Right?
I initially formed the Saro Day Committee, and I initially appointed Patty Birch, and I also performed the wedding ceremony for her. So, let's not try to twist this into something that this isn't.
So, you agree.
What I'm saying is, this is specifically for her, and that I have a problem. It's, it's an ordinance for one person.
I don't understand the comment about restriction, though. I thought that when I read this ordinance, that it actually opened up the volunteerability to anybody that owns a home in Saro. It doesn't just reside.
Well, that's, that's, what, what does that have to do with it? You have, we have landlords all over, all over the state and the country. That means a landlord in California, we could appoint to a board or commissioner.
If they want to make that commute, God, God bless them.
It gets silly. That's the problem with it, Ricky.
Let me ask a question. You want to add outside residents, and that's okay, but the internal residents that appear...
Wait a minute. This ordinance is almost word for word what I was, what was recommended to me, let's say, a month or so ago by people on the rec department, which, you know, that's what, where they want to go, that's where they want to go. The, the other thing is, I would, I would just start whittling this down, because do you really want somebody who doesn't live in Saro, being on SARA, being on land use boards? It get, it can get a little convoluted.
But didn't you just say to Malara brothers?
Malara brothers, A, worked, spent thirty-plus years working in Saro, teaching our children. They live across Bourntown Avenue. They're interested in the human relations, and they would actually have been excellent on it. I think that this is written, like I said, this is almost verbatim what was recommended to me to keep Patty on the board. I'd like this looked at several different ways. I'd like the attorney to research a little bit, because we can't be the first municipality that has dealt with this issue. And I'd like to see what other, what other municipalities, how they have addressed this.
He can do that.
That's my opinion.
But I'd like to introduce this in the next meeting.
Ricky, you do what you want. I, I mean, I figured you would do what you want, or do what you're... Okay. Is there any, any, any more discussion on this?
Mayor, unfortunately, I, I may have one more appointment to make.
I don't know whether you can do it. This is the agenda meeting now.
Okay.
Any other discussion on ordinance 280-15A? Okay. Let's go to ordinance 281-15A. The ordinance amending the administration, the Recreation Advisory Board, this is its composition. By the way, whoever put this together, I did, I did, I have been in contact with the youth athletic leagues, and, and, and my understanding is, none of them were the ones that I've been in contact with, were not contacted about this. This was just something done without their input.
Well, that's exactly the point, right? We need to put this together so we can ask them. We're creating this opportunity...
Yeah, but they had no input into this ordinance.
We're creating the possibility so they can be part of the rec board. So, you would twist it the other way and said, well, how can you do this without getting an ordinance change? So, we're, we're increasing the amount of people, and then we're gonna go to them.
Like, Ricky, you guys are gonna do what you're gonna do. I'm just saying that the people you're including have not been, have not been consulted on this.
After next meeting, once we introduce, then I'll have that conversation.
Ricky, you're going... Go right ahead.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this? Next ordinance, 282, 282-15. Youth athletic organizations. Also, those same youth athletic organizations. Now, in this, what it says is, "We have an ordinance now which requires any youth organization, any sporting organization, that it takes money from the borough and uses borough property, that they have to file their bylaws and their financials." What this says is, you don't have to file your bylaws, and you don't have to file your financials. So, we, we're going from great transparency to no transparency, and, and I object on that ground. There didn't seem to be, other than a timing issue, any, any pushback on, on filing the financials and filing the bylaws. Now, and again, the athletic organizations that I talked to were not contacted about this.
Well, being I'm part of multiple organizations in this town, there is a lot that needs to be cleaned up in this ordinance. A, the financials, that's one thing, but there's other issues.
Well, cleaned up in what way, Ricky?
Well, the borough gives X amount of dollars for municipally-sponsored organizations, right? There, what we're proposing is that they show receipts for all of the money that they spent on that. We don't need to know...
Why aren't they, why, why are they going from filing their financials to not filing...
Well, because a lot of complaints they were getting was, we were forcing them to use this, an accounting service and pay someone to do a full financial report. And it's, it's, it's difficult. You have volunteer organizations, volunteer people, that we, they can't even get a treasurer just to keep...
I, I don't think you included, I, I would recommend before you, you do, you go forward on this ordinance, you have all, all the organizations come together and discuss it.
Mayor, if I may comment just real quick?
Go ahead.
When Councilwoman Necker was here, the, her goal, and I, her and I spoke about it, was to make sure that the borough's money going into the organizations were accounted for. I could tell you that organizations that did not get any funding, or parts of the organization that did not get any funding, it was an exorbitant cost, and they get no funding from the borough.
What's an exorbitant cost, Dan?
For an organization that is nonprofit, it was seven hundred and fifty dollars just to do a financial statement, which, again, is...
Well, you have to, don't, as a nonprofit, don't you have to fill...
You have to file reports.
File. And in that filing, so that's, what's the cost you incur for that?
It's minimal compared to an actual report, and, and the more extensive the report, the more expensive it is.
How expensive a report does the borough require?
The one, the organization I ran cost seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, but, but the question is, what, what does the borough require?
That was the minimum requirement. And again, it's, the, the travel organizations who don't get funding and are parent-driven and, and family-driven and fundraising-driven, those organizations were, were being hurt by the ordinance itself. When you look at the, the money that's coming out from the borough, that's, that's what we need to protect.
Listen, fellas, you're gonna do what you're gonna do, but we're going from great transparency...
I, I think this one needs to be...
To little transparency.
This one needs to be looked at.
Without the input of the, of the organizations themselves, or at least the ones that I talked to.
Well, I, I'll ask that we, we table this one, just to discuss it with the Rec Advisory Board and, and, and other organizations.
Well, why don't you bring in the youth organization, why don't you bring in the rec, the, the, the rec groups? You know, the, the baseball groups and soccer groups?
Yeah, I'm trying to get them on the rec board.
And have a meeting and discuss this.
I think that's what that other ordinance was for, trying to get them involved.
I, I think they should.
Listen, you don't have to put, you know, you can, you can just call them all up, call them all up and say, why don't you come to Borough Hall on such and such a day?
It wasn't a great success.
Ricky, a man of your talents, I'm surprised.
Question on this. I'd like to hear from each of my colleagues, C, why they do not want the bylaws anymore. And the first one, the financial could just be restructured. There are other ways to prepare statements that wouldn't be as expensive. I'd like to hear from each of my colleagues why they want to eliminate both of those and eliminate the transparencies.
If I may speak, if you don't mind, send some to your left.
Yeah.
I, maybe it's just my naivety here, meaning, I thought that this particular meeting was where you had the discussion about whether or not you wanted to move forward with ordinances that are put up for the next meeting.
Well, tweak them.
Right? That's, that's how the...
Well, tweak them.
Tweak them, this is what the discussion is. So, once again, I get so frustrated with you, Mr. Rittenhouse, when you turn around and you say that your colleagues have put something in front of you and just assume that we all agreed to it. I thought that this was supposed to be a council about discussion.
I didn't say that. I wanted to know from each of my colleagues how you feel on B and C. That's what I asked. I didn't say...
If we went back to the minutes, I got the impression that once again, you're insinuating why, why my colleagues want to eliminate the financials and the transparency. I'm, I'm...
Well, you don't, then say you don't.
Well, we're having the discussion now, so I wanted the opportunity to actually say here that I don't necessarily support every single change here. And I know that you voted no to each one of our, the appointments that were put forth by the president here.
Just as you did with the mayors.
Again, you call for some type of bipartisanship and some type of open hearing, and yet, you turn around and do the exact same thing with the appointments that are put here. I just get very tired when I feel like someone is attempting to read my mind. Trust me, it's a very complicated mind. My husband tries, he's not successful. I highly doubt in a couple of weeks of me sitting next to you that you would be as, even more successful. I do not support moving this ordinance forward at this time. I actually think it would be a good idea to hold it. I think that by bringing in the thirty-three members onto the board with the previous ordinance spoke about would be a more beneficial way to go about it. I think that the more individuals that we can have from an organization perspective, from the youth groups, would be a great way to move forward with that. I actually agreed with the mayor here in relation to, in, in respect to that, and with Dan Buchanan. So, that is my opinion on that particular...
Okay. Councilman Buchanan had already made a motion to table, but we're still under comment. Arthur, did you want to proceed?
That was fine.
Okay. So, Councilman Buchanan, you want to, on 281-15A? Is it, is that the one? No.
282-15.
282-15.
282. That's gonna be tabled for more work.
Terry, what's the A for? I don't know.
It's like the pre-personal...
So, it'll be next time we bring it?
Send a notation?
There you go. No gender notation.
Okay. We're gonna go to Administration and Finance.
Can I have a second on that table, Mayor?
Is there a second on the table?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There we go. All right. Under, under Communications, Councilwoman Novak, please look over one to eight, and let me know if you have any objections to these being introduced.
If you don't, under Councilwoman Novak, she did ask me to make mention of something in regards to communications. Is that what you do at this point?
Is it on one to eight?
I'm sorry, it's not on one to eight. I apologize.
Okay. Are there any objections on one to eight? Any additions, any discussion? Okay. Just let me get through this, Councilwoman Kilpatrick, and then we'll go to what... Okay. On B, is there, are there any objections?
Social affairs permits.
Right. Social affair permits. And C, with the tax collector on the, on the refund, are there any objections? It's a, a hundred percent disabled vet. And then on D, the public hearing, it's just a receive and file. Councilwoman Kilpatrick.
Again, Mary wasn't here, but before she went, she asked me to pass this on. There was an article in the suburban dated January 22nd entitled "Saros Whitford," and I know I don't want to mispronounce this, but I do think it's, is it Meline or Milney? Milney. Play in the Brett Cooper Bowl. It's regarding a football tournament, and I think maybe Ricky and Mr. Melendez might know a little bit more about it. But there were two young people from Saro Middle School, seventh grade students, who had the opportunity to participate in this football bowl, where really, it's an organization, the Brett Cooper Junior Academic All-American Bowl in Dallas, Texas. And what this does is, it really strengthens the idea that football isn't just about football, it's about academics as well. And the article is very well-written. And these two gentlemen, these two young men, I want to make sure I get that, it's Connor Milney and Mark Whitford, had the opportunity to play in this bowl, and it would be nice, I believe that Jimmy Milney, the father of the one, had requested that perhaps we can do something from the council level to kind of restore some faith in this football program that unfortunately made the headlines, to show that these young men, they really...
Which organization did they play with?
Well, they belong to one place for the Panthers. One place for the Panthers. They're both Saro middle school students that are aspiring football players.
Right.
And what they were able to do, I'll pass this over to you so you can read the article.
What is it you'd like done?
I believe that Mrs. Novak would like to see these two young men, or at least Jimmy Milney, certificates of...
Ricky, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Terry, if you would arrange that for the next meeting.
I apologize. She would be more articulate in that, but I promised her not to bring that up.
Okay. Anything else, Councilwoman?
No, that's all she told me.
No, that's all she told me.
Mayor, I received an email today, there's gonna be a finance committee meeting on Thursday at four o'clock here at Borough Hall.
Okay. Planning and zoning, Councilman Buchanan.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, thank you, Mayor. Letter A, like to receive and file. And under committee reports, I'm just, oh, I just progress, I guess.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Public works, Councilwoman Kell Patrick.
Request received from Brighton Builder LLC for the release of performance bond for the installation of playground equipment at the Laurel Park and Oak Tree Park.
Okay. Jay, is this CBDG money?
Mayor, this was a project, I think the borough used money, you got a special deal on having it installed because you pre-purchased it. It was done through the, done through the rec department and public works department, and I believe you have a sign-off.
Oh, right, okay, okay, okay. Any objection? Anything else, Councilwoman?
Yes, again, to bring up my report from earlier, with the Edison fire and stuff moving forward and ripping through that particular town, but what I've been able to see at the public works department building, I would like to move forward with looking into having a public works garage, finding property in which we can move forward as a township, and actually get the gentleman there, the facilities that they need to serve this town better. I believe that in the past, we've entertained a couple of different properties trying to find out what would work best for us. I know that we've received the, I believe it's four million dollars, was it, in funds that we took in from the South Amboy Water Exchange. There is money sitting there, money that we didn't have, we don't have to dip into other funds and so forth for, and I think that it's high time that we really take the time and get this place up and running in a way that's even more effective than what they've been able to do with shortened staff. So, if possible, I'd like to entertain the idea of trying to find out which property would be best suited for what we need now in town.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
No, that would be all.
Okay, recreation, Councilman Melendez.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, request for Patty Burris to conduct Borough Serbo's twentieth annual Serbo Day event. Anyone have a problem with that? Okay, progress, thank you.
Water and sewer, Councilman Rittenhouse.
Progress.
Public safety, council president.
Thank you, Mayor. Request recording twice at the intersection of Washington and Ernston Roads from ten AM to two PM, received from Seville River Dogs, the Blue AU team on March twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen, and the Seville Bombers Girl Soccer Booster Club, seventh to twelfth grades on May ninth, twenty fifteen.
Any objections, next item.
Letter resignation received from firefighter Thomas Taser of Seville Engine Company Number One.
Any objection, next item.
Seville Engine Company Number One requesting permissible approval of an application for firefighter received from Mohammed A Ramadan and accept at their meeting on January twenty-fifth.
Any objection? Next item.
Progress.
Okay. Under the BA's report, let's see, go ahead.
Mayor, we're looking for authorization for a resolution to execute the amendment to the twenty thirteen residential maintenance service to extend service for the calendar year twenty fifteen funded with the Older Americans Act funds, total contract increase in additional four thousand five hundred dollars.
Any objection? Next item.
We'll be looking to go into closed section for tax appeal and settlement discussions.
Okay, next item.
Under public safety, we already did the appointment of Tom Cassidy and Al Gavren at the council meeting. We're looking for authorization to execute an interlocal services agreement with the township of East Brunswick Fire District for the provision of fire protection services for a three-year period from May two thousand and fifteen to April of eighteen at nine thousand dollars a year. This is a renewal, Mayor.
Any objection?
I'll need a resolution on that.
Okay, next item.
Under public works, we need authorization to appoint Gary H. as supervisor of public works as per civil service promotional procedures effective January twenty-seven, twenty fifteen.
Any objection? Next item.
We'll need a reso on that, Mayor. Under recreation, the recreation director is requesting an increase in fees for all recreation-sponsored programs and permits by five percent or to the nearest five-dollar increment to defer the cost of online registrations. That's the credit card fee.
Okay, next item.
We'll need a reso on that also.
Yep.
Not yet. We have a request from LEAD, the Law Enforcement Against Drugs, and the Serbo Police Department to conduct a carnival at Kennedy Park from April fourth to the twelfth. I don't know if you wanted to have a little bit of a discussion on this, this is Easter week, I don't know if you wanted to go the entire week. They have been informed of the proper procedures, and they are following everything that they need to do to get it up and going, so-
Anybody, anybody have any questions?
No.
No, we're good.
No issues? Okay, I'll go ahead and inform them.
Okay.
And we do have some discussions for closed session under personnel. And under Wayne's agenda, he's looking for approval for a billist resolution, for a billist resolution at the next meeting, possible transfer resolution, and the annual ordinance to increase the appropriation cap from two point five to three point five. This is an annual thing that's done by the CFO.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay, Jay?
Thank you, Mayor. At a recent meeting, we were asked to review a request to reduce the bonds for the Camelot at Town Lake project. We've gone through that and are recommending the bonds be reduced to reflect the work that's been completed to date. We'd ask that you have a resolution at your next meeting.
Any objection? Okay, I'm gonna go to the public portion, is there, we're not taking any action when we come out of closed session, right? No.
Mayor, if I can ask Jay a couple of quick questions-
Go right ahead. Close are quick, Dan.
They're gonna be very quick.
What?
Are you kidding me?
Okay.
Jay, just, can you give us an update on the Ernston Bourne Town Light and where we are? Because I know last year, we were talking about possibly looking at the restripe, changing the striping, we had to wait for the punch lists.
The status has still not changed. Ninety-nine percent of the punch list items have been resolved, but there's an issue with the bridge that the county is still reviewing, so the project has not been closed out. We were waiting for it to be closed out, and then we were gonna approach the county with the signage and striping and other issues that have been raised.
Okay, and between Mike and Jay, where are we at with the White Oaks light? The light, the traffic light, White Oaks?
I can give an update. The county, because of the timeframe, when the project was originally designed and when you actually acquired the property, some modifications are required to the handicap design for that project. The county is scheduled this month in February to approve a change order to allow those changes to be made. Once the changes are made, then they're gonna go through and proceed with the bidding.
Okay, do you know timeframe, do we have approximate timeframe?
You're probably looking at the summer for construction.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go into closed session, I'm being told there's gonna be action taken when we come out of closed session. This should be interesting. Counselor, go ahead.
Yes, whereas the public bodies have the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the borough council, the public portion of this meeting is hereby adjourned in order that the governing body may meet in closed private session for approximately ten minutes to discuss the following matters: tax litigation and personnel. Following the conclusion of said closed session, the governing body shall reconvene. The opening portion of this meeting should consider any of the matters may be brought. Before it at this time, minutes will be kept, and once a matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then amendments can be made public. Now therefore be resolved, and the public be excluded, and this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Counselor, can we add potential litigation to that, please?
Is there a motion?
It's all moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll go back here.
I don't have to do that. I don't know how they change their minds today. They may change them now. Yeah, maybe you see what's happening. There's something they do. It's... Okay, so why not? Why not? It's... 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 It comes out here. They actually put a big one. And we're... 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 My line is kind of on the... As was... I hope that being soft on the front. Okay. They must have something there. They need to walk. Yeah. I think it's out there. That's why they never had that. Well, and the little ones have to go to repair again on weeks because they can't think of a way to get it out. But I do... I do like... I do like that. I mean, it's... I mean, it's... I mean, it's... Well, we... 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 It's... It's... It makes it collapse. If you... It just attracts the... The light. The light. So... I don't know which one it's from inside or right now. I think it's not open. It's... 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 It has to be like the most red house. It's... 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 My sister. And they am sorry. I guess if you don't hold it to your... I don't know. It's... 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 Why don't you watch the... Because I feel that that's not... You know, everyone will be there. Oh, I... I can't... I don't have shot. It's... 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 Sorry. I got that. I had to... Yeah. It was just a gap about a single one. Yeah. Over. So... They had... They had... They had the gentleman. They had the gentleman. They were... And then everything. I said, I should... I started off with so... Yeah. I... I'm... 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 This is absolutely... I'm... 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 And that's... 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 I'm... I'm... To what? I was... Now, it's six down. Yeah. I think that's... They... 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 They're... 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 It's not long. It's... 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 There's some... They... It's... Yeah. True. We... This... Yeah. So this can't... I don't... I don't... I don't... It's... 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 That's one of my shows. That's it. That's one of my shows. Yeah. I also... I... Well, I... I don't know. He said, we should... Well, it's... Well, it's... Well, it's... Yeah. Yeah. Jesus, you... 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 Yeah. Yeah. Jesus, you... 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 It's a... 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 Just... But it's... 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 I'm just giving this... I'm just giving this... I'm just giving this... I... 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 And these, I don't... I was... I... 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 That's... 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 What do you know about this? I think that you can have a paid... A paid cost. Yeah. I'm... 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 Yeah. There's... There's... Yeah. I don't know. I don't know. There's a thing. But... 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 It's still the best... It's... 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 I... 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 Then... You... 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 I hear... I... 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 So... I... Yeah. We can't... First off, remember this been with the heat. It's still... I don't use this. Heat on slide one. Sure. We're... George. I said, it's... 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 Something that's... Yeah. So... I don't know. It's... I don't know. It's... I... I... I said... You know... When you're working... When you're... When you're... Yeah. I said... I said... I think... I think that several... I think... I think... I think... I think... I think... I said... I think... I think... I think... I think... I think... I think that several... I think... I think... I think... I said... I said... I think... 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 They don't have... I think... 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 Yeah. That's the next... I think... 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 I think...[742.22] Well, now we're changing people back on. But it first.
Right, right.
You have TV?
I don't get it.
Can't hear.
Yep.
Sorry, take care.
Take care.
I think that was yours.
Well, you can do it alone. You can do it alone.
Take a motion to go back into closed?
So moved.
All in fa-- is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there any other business before this governing body?
At this time, Mayor, I'd like to bring up the salary adjustments.
Are we voting on these tonight, Council President?
I would like to hold off until Mr. Frankel comes back to get the exact numbers.
Well, why don't we wait till he comes back because if I remember correctly, when Councilwoman Novak first asked for the agenda to follow the regular meeting, the purpose of the agenda was to go over things and have a discussion and then at the next meeting, take action on it, but of course...
I correct myself, Mayor, you're right. We can vote on these raises, the salary adjustments.
Well, we can discuss them in public. Why do we have to vote on them?
Vote on and wait until Mr. Frankel comes back to memorialize them.
Why would we do that? Why don't we wait till the public is here? Let's discuss them. Let's discuss these raises. So, who do we have here? So, we have three department heads that you guys are looking to give a raises to.
This is on personnel.
Well, if you're going to vote on giving them a raise, their name's going to be mentioned. So, Art, did you have a comment?
I just think, you know, we're talking about stuff. We don't know the numbers. That's why we have to wait for Mr. Frankel to come back. And we also, you know, you know, we're looking at raises, but we're not looking at performance evaluations, which is something I think you should do. That's my only comment, but we're talking about giving raises, but we don't know what numbers we're going to give.
The question is the criteria because without establishing the criteria, then every employee in the borough has a legitimate right to come and say, "What about me?" And I'm still not hearing the criteria other than you think that they work hard.
Um, Mayor, if I may, I think that some of the criteria, at least regarding three of the members, had to do with the fact that their contract under SAMs was not being adhered to a number of years back.
Well, let's find out.
Right.
I could...
I still haven't gotten a report from Labor Council on that.
There were the three department heads that we were discussing back in, I want to say, 2008, 2009, maybe later than that, were not, they hadn't agreed upon an agreement that they would get the same increases as the statutory and SAMs employees. Those people, the three people that we're discussing today, did not get that increase. I sat with, in the interview for Mr. Ust, and it was explained to him that that's how it would happen, and then after that, there was a period with that one year, they did not get that increase, and that's what we're talking about now. And it keeps on coming up year after year after year, and it does need to get addressed because these three individuals were entitled to, were entitled to these adjustments.
We have the contract language. They are noted in the recognition clause of that contract. So, when it comes to, you know, I'm not one for, you know, bypassing, you know, attorney or even, trust me, any type of union consult as the vice president of the Cerebral Education Association, but a recognition clause is quite clear, and we have not just one, not just two, not just three, not just four, but going back multiple years under that recognition clause that it's never been changed. We have copies of each and every one of them that's been provided, I believe, to everyone up here. Mr. Dupont, was that passed on to you as well, the SAMs contract regarding those employees with the recognition clause?
Yeah, you know, it's my, that was passed on to me, and with that being said, you all can make a motion to approve the salary adjustment, subject to verification by the Borough Administrator, to by Labor Council, and then implement that upon verification.
Well, let me see if I understand it. So, the whole purpose of having these double meetings of workshop and an action meeting is really for the birds. Counselor, if I may, so this whole thing is really false of having these split meetings. So, an agenda meeting, there is no action taken. Items are discussed and then put on for the regular council meeting, which is the action meeting, but of course, if you're a friend or something like that, then all rules go out the window and we have new rules, as I found out tonight, new rules, appointing a special counsel, new rules as far as raises for employees. It's interesting times we live in, not necessarily good times, only interesting.
Can I ask the Borough Attorney a question? In the event that the SAMs contract does in fact come back, that we were in violation, is there a cost to the borough if they decide to file some type of grievance claim through their union representative?
Sure, you'd have to, you'd have to retain Labor Council to fight that grievance regarding...
Would there be a cost incurred by the borough?
Sure.
In order to do that?
Sure.
Okay.
So, again, with respect to the way this meeting has been scheduled, unfortunately though, although there's an agenda meeting and a council meeting, we still need to have, I believe, it's my opinion, that you can have an executive session and have action taken.
Of course, you believe that. I would be surprised if you didn't believe that.
Mayor, I appreciate the support and the words, but I, but I think though, that although this is our first stab at this, I still think that the mayor and council have the ability to act on, as a result of personnel or as a result of litigation, even if it's in the agenda meeting. I still think that the mayor and council have that power to act in executive, or follow an executive session.
Was this a crisis? Is there a crisis going on where we need to act on this tonight that I'm not aware of?
Mayor, we've seen you have been hanging on this for quite a while.
I haven't been hanging on it. Your friends have been hanging on it, but I haven't been hanging on it.
I have because it's just been sitting here dormant. I'd like to do the right thing by these employees. We have, we have, and the SAMs employees, we have a young woman who has gotten a promotion, but the money that is due to that promotion never followed her.
I have seniors who have trouble paying their bills, and you guys are giving away...
I am a senior trying to pay my bills. I know all about it.
See, I think there's a motion regarding the department heads that I enunciated. I don't know if that's what the intent was.
Yes, it is. That's the intent.
Counselor, you're in on this. Why don't you just lead this part of the meeting and get the vote done?
Mayor...
I mean, these are your friends too. They're certainly not a friend of the taxpayers.
Mayor, again...
I just can't take, I'm sorry, I have to interject. I don't understand what friends you're relating to. I don't think you know me very well, and I'm sure you don't know my friends.
But if I could reiterate what has been transpired here, so the, with respect to the department heads, it's my understanding that the mayor and council wish to move ahead with the salary adjustments that were...
The mayor does not want to move ahead.
That were part of a contractual relationship that occurred years ago. This, these salary adjustments will only take place subject to the Borough Administrator verifying with the Labor Council. And those include Bernie Bailey, Jerry Ust, and Colette Zalinski. Someone correct?
And we have no idea the dollars involved, but it doesn't matter.
We're just placing on the consent agenda. With the next regular council meeting, by that time we'll have multiple years together. We know where you want to go with it. We know what the discussion was, and by that time we can have our facts together, have it in black and white, and have it before everybody. But you could have a motion to place on the consent agenda resolution at the next meeting. But if you want to vote on it tonight, you can do that. I'm just throwing it out there. It's the way to go.
Let's go with the consent agenda.
So, we'll have resolutions for the next meeting?
You just need to make sure that's an authorization to do that. So, we have a motion.
I need a motion telling me to place that on the next consent agenda.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Now, is this just for the three department heads we just discussed?
No, I want it for everyone.
For everyone?
Read the names.
We're talking for the department heads of Bernie Bailey, Jerry Ust, and Colette Zalinski, and for SAMs employees, Amel Asinski, Kevin Krishinsky, and Jennifer Krishinsky, appointment for a Sipin for a safety coordinator, and the business administrator for a three-year salary increase.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Who moved that motion, Mayor?
Councilman Miguel? Yes.
And who seconded that motion?
I did.
Thank you, just for clarification. Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Melendez?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Is there any other business in front of this governing body tonight? Oh, I have to do the open public portion. This time, I'm going to open the open public portion for questions and comments on any and all issues. Are there any questions or comments? Ken?
Ken Olshusky, 108 North Edgeworth Street. I'm a little confused on this agenda versus regular meeting, and I wonder if somebody can enlighten me.
We're all confused. I think you'd have to check with Councilwoman Novak. It's her initiative. Basically, she found the two meetings as one confusing, and she wanted them separated out, so we had the action meeting first and the agenda meeting second.
I want to go back, going back sometime actually to the days that I sat up there. And we had an agenda meeting on a Monday and a council meeting on a Wednesday, and it was pretty clear cut what happened. And sometime after that, quite a few years ago, we went into this merged meeting situation. And I thought that, there was a question before, if action could be taken at an agenda meeting. I thought that during many of those years, after the separate Monday, Wednesday meetings, that action was taken at agenda meetings. And I, that's my first question, is there, is that a rule of the council that we don't take, or we can't make appointments or do a vote at an agenda meeting? Is that a rule of the council? Is that a state law? Or can I, can I get a comment perhaps from the Borough Attorney on that?
Yeah, you know, I think that your rules under Cerebral govern what you can and cannot do on the agenda. There's also an ordinance set forth as to what the agenda will set forth. You know, it was my opinion this evening that even though the executive session was at the end of the agenda, I still think that this mayor and council were able to act on whatever they deemed to be in the welfare and best interest of Cerebral.
Does that include making appointments?
I believe that you could make appointments in the council session without having the rules in front of me that govern your meeting. I don't have, I don't have that answer right in front of me.
I'd like to, and thank you very much for that. I'd like to get a clarification because this is starting to get very confusing. So, we're going to have the council meeting first and then the agenda meeting after the council. That's going to be the regular order of business from now on. Is that correct?
Mayor, if I may, answer. Councilwoman Novak and I, before the end of the year, were discussing it, and one of the things that we got away from all these years, and it has become a habit, I guess, of the council, is everything, we do our regular council meeting, and then the agenda comes afterwards, and it's all combined, and has always been combined for the last several years. But we got away from actually discussing the ordinances like we started to tonight. And it, there's growing pains. We're going to have to break habits that have been in existence for several years now for some of us up here, and we're still, the new people that are coming up are learning themselves. But our goal is to actually have a dialogue on potential ordinances so that we're not just sitting up here blindly, and we're not going to, you know, I don't believe that we're going, we're not going to vote on those ordinances at this point. We're just approving the ordinances for the actual meeting in two weeks. And that was our goal, was to have a dialogue. As far as the appointments, my understanding was that we can, as any public meeting can pass motions and appointments because it is an open public meeting, so we have that ability to do that.
Okay, and I think, Councilman Buchanan, what you outlined is an admirable goal. I don't disagree on any of that. The discussion of what's coming up, that's a, that's a fine idea. I would just like to know if I can, perhaps at the next meeting, or that I can see the clerk sometime between now and the next meeting, as to what can and can be done at the agenda meeting. I'd like to have that for my information and for the record.
You know what I can do is if you call me tomorrow at the office, I can pull the ordinance out.
A resident can't call you. We have to pay for that. So, at the next meeting, give them the information.
Or if you could leave it what, yeah, I'd suggest if you could give it to the...
The VA will take it.
To the clerk, so I can get it from the clerk.
Residents are not authorized to call Borough Professionals.
That's a very good policy. Thank you very, and one other thing. To Councilwoman Rittenhouse, I know there was a lot of discussion tonight about fraudulent meetings and having collusion, et cetera. I would just like to remind, I know everybody didn't sit here then, I'd like to remind, go on the record, that not too many years ago, at a January 1st, and for those that don't know, January 1st has been the day to reorganize for the Cerebral Governing Body, probably since Jesus was a little boy. All of a sudden, one January 1st, about four or five years ago, a bunch of people weren't available. They weren't available so that the firemen who come here every January 1st with their families and celebrate that day, they couldn't do it, and everybody else that by tradition for years and years wasn't able to do this because a bunch of people all of a sudden decided they weren't available. So, when you go to the prosecutor, maybe you can look at the records from that date and see if there's a so-called collusion. Maybe that's when the collusion started. And I don't know if you knew that, Councilman, but you might keep that in mind because a January 1st, a disgrace in my mind to the borough and to all these wonderful volunteers, and all of a sudden, there was no meeting. So, meetings have varied over the years. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? If there are no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
So, move close to the portion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you, everyone.